For this meeting of the Development, Control and Licensing Committee, welcome to the members of the public. I'm just going to remind you that recording of council meetings that any member of the public may film audio or record photographs, use social media to report proceedings of any meeting, as in this one. So if there's anyone sitting behind me, although the technicality is, because if you're a member of the public, you haven't subscribed to this necessarily, if there's anyone sitting behind me who would prefer not to appear on the video, I'll just give you a moment to move if you wish to do so. Apparently the camera is focused on you, I apologise for that, but however. Ladies and gentlemen, on a more serious note, the minutes of this meeting recall that Roger Begey, as a member, not as leader of the council, spoke to this meeting, as ever, he spoke for his constituents in his wall. As this is the first meeting since that meeting, I would like you to adjut a minute's silence Thank you very much indeed. Before I move on to the agenda, there are operations this evening. Item two has been withdrawn, the site dipper, sorry, withdrawn on a technicality. And we will, as usual, take the item which has a delegation, which is item number four, we will take that first, and then move on to the items, I'll take ALDI second, and move on in that way. May I have a personal signature minutes of the last meeting of 10th of December? Thank you, Mr. Ochsley, all those in favour please. And abstentions? Thank you very much. Not item number two, declarations of interest, do I have any, Mr. Ochsley?
Thank you, Chairman, it's 2015-0291, personal but not prejudicial, I know someone who had an allotment on that site.
Thank you very much indeed. Mr. Lanning?
On the same item, cunitary interest, the agent is a close friend, so I shall be in the meeting for that item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lanning. Anyone else? And I also, for a matter of probity, on the ALDI application, would declare that I know the only Britland jetta in the report who is an ALDI friend, I have no cunitary interest and it's not particularly the pleasure to do. Thank you. And petitions, deputations, questions?
Lovely, Chair.
Thank you. And deputations relating to planning applications?
One deputation, Madam Chair, in relation to item four, which is to be read by Mrs. Lee on behalf of Mrs. Wilkinson.
Thank you very much indeed. As usual, I'll ask the planning officer to give us a very brief introduction. In fact, our legal officer is then going to read out the deputation. There will then be the opportunity for members to ask questions. I don't think you have any right to reply. Will we have a right to reply? Have we been interviewed at the time, on behalf of the agent? No, we're not aware of that, so members will have time to ask questions. So, Mr. Hodget, if you'd like, give us a brief introduction.
Yes, Chairman, this is a site on the A47 in the central place, and members may be familiar with it on the corner of the junction with Seaton Road. It's been a garage for many years, but for many years it's been disused. The proposal is to erect four new dwellings on the site. That's a closer up view showing the site boundary. Next door is a property number four Main Road, which is where the person who is making the deputation to you tonight lives. Beyond that is an old farmhouse, which is number six. Number four has previously had this sort of flat roof glazed extension on it, which has recently been replaced by a solid roof extension, which you'll see photographs of later. The proposal is to retain a small portion of the building attached to that house number four, and to erect three dwellings across the front there and another one at the back. And that's a view across the site from the A47 down onto Seaton Road. There's a monkey puzzle tree on the front of the site, which is subject to a tree preservation order, which is seen here. This is the A47 at the top, Seaton Road to the side, number four is here. It's proposed to erect three dwellings in this location side by side, and another one at the back facing onto Seaton Road. There will be access in at this point to five parking spaces in this area, and then three other spaces in that location there. And this area here is the back door on number four.
Thank you very much indeed. I'll ask the legal officer to read out the deputation.
Good evening, members, and through you, Chair, thank you. I'm reading this on behalf of the deputy Mrs. Janet Wilkinson, who, as Mr. Hodget said, lives at four Main Road Gleyston. It's written, "For concerned residents and neighbours of the proposed development of the Gleyston Garage site, two Main Road Gleyston LA15IBP, and is sent in on behalf of Mrs. Wilkinson, Mr. Ian Wilkinson, both at four Main Road, John Davidson at fifteen Main Road, Colin Miller and Georgina Ann Johnson at twenty-one Main Road, Susan Lee of Gleyston Grange, Ian and Catherine Turvey of Lonsdale Farm, and Ian and Sarah and Hannah Hollis." So this is the deputation. "We assume that the committee are aware of the extent and nature of our objections concerning the height, type, and number of proposed dwellings, and the impact of these on neighbouring properties and the looking sphere of the village in general. We feel the parking arrangements and access are particularly problematic. The proposed access arrangements are dangerous and ill-considered, and we feel will inevitably lead to accidents. The proposal cites that the access to be used is existing. This is true, but it has only been used historically as access onto the site, and not as a two-way access. Cars leaving the site will not feed naturally onto the correct lane, returning onto the A47, but will have to cross the road to do so almost on the junction. This junction already has poor visibility, and it will be made worse by the heightening of the wall up to six feet at the front of the development. In addition to the access and parking arrangements at the front of the site adjacent to the A47, there are three parking spaces that allow each car to back off the site onto Seaton Road. There were initially objections to this from the Highway Department. Quote one, additionally highways commented that the existing vehicular access to serve plots one to three would have been used one-way traffic. The alteration in the access to two-way traffic is too close to the junction and would be detrimental to highway safety. Quote two, parking plot three is bound by a 1.5 metre wall and has no turning circle. This can result in vehicles reverse... it says reserving, but I think it means reversing onto the highway, and also limits the visibility display. The revised drawing has repositioned two parking spaces from the rear plot four to the rear plot three. The relocation would result in three vehicles reversing onto the highway instead of one from the previous application. This increase would be detrimental to highway safety. Once Seaton Road and planning the build had to demonstrate that a car could turn within the boundaries of the property to avoid the problem of backing onto the road. Has policy changed? We are frankly astonished that these are considered appropriate arrangements, and do not believe there has been an adequate highway safety study done. Another major concern is the number of properties proposed to this site. It is this that leads to all the problems. Four houses is a nose of overdevelopment at the site. If the number were to be reduced to two or three, then most of the problems inherent in this proposal could be alleviated. Height scale and impact on the village and neighbours could be reduced, and parking and access arrangements properly and safely dealt with. We're of course aware of the need to make a profit from the development of this site, and do not begrudge this. However, we are saddened by the thought that the character of the village, the safety at the junction, and the amenity of the neighbouring properties will be the price paid. Profit and good, considerate, village-enhancing development are not mutually exclusive. We feel it is perfectly possible to achieve both here. We understand a new scheme has been submitted by the same developers. This scheme also has four dwellings proposed, but goes some way to addressing a fair proportion of the concerns, albeit outstanding is still the controversial access point too close to the A47 junction. In conclusion, we would like to request that the committee visit the site, since the full impact of the proposal is impossible to judge solely on paper."
Thank you very much indeed. I understand Mr. Wilkinson, you will be prepared to answer any questions. Are there any questions from members, please? Right, in that case, I will ask the opposite, proceed to the full report now, the original ones, just an introduction.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Again, going about this is the actual site itself. To the south on Seaton Road, there is a bungalow in this location that has a garage there adjacent to the boundary, and a driveway in front of it. There is a turning space for that property there. The garage site has two access points, one at that point there, and the other one, which is there. In terms of the existing site, you can see there's a low stone wall along the front of the site at the moment, behind the footpath, and then as you turn into Seaton Road, it's mainly grass verge along that section with the other existing access point there. This is an old sort of office, I think, at the front of the site, and beyond that is a large workshop. And there's a single-storey stone element in here that would be retained as part of the front scheme. You'll see that it's joined on to number four at that point, so there's more detailed photographs of that later. So part of the proposal is to raise that stone wall at the front to 1.8 metres along that darkened section. When the application was originally submitted, that 1.8 metre wall came all the way around the corner to there, and it was proposed to erect three timber carports in this location here. The Highway Authority were concerned about the height of that wall around that corner blocking visibility for vehicles coming out of this access, which itself is five metres wide, so it's as wide as a normal estate road, and there's plenty of room there for two vehicles to pass each other. So the applicant agreed to maintain only that dark section as the high wall, and the rest of this would remain no more than 900 high above the level of the highway. And the three garages were removed to leave open parking spaces, such that any vehicles leaving this access do get an oblique view back onto the A47 to see any vehicles that will be slowing down to turn into this road whilst they're leaving the access. The scheme has been amended. This plot at the back was in roughly this location when it was first submitted, and then there was parking space in this area next to the bungalow to the south. That resulted in quite a cramped garden for these two plots. So that was moved further away, and the parking spaces were transferred to this point, where as you can see, they would back out onto Seaton Road. The Highway Authority was a little concerned about that initially, because this wall here came more or less along the highway boundary line, and this property was slightly further forward. That resulted in the blocking of visibility, particularly for the two end spaces while they were reversing out. That wall has now been altered, the angle of that wall has now been altered, so you can see that it's now set back at that point. And this dwelling has also been moved back a metre further than where it was originally shown. And as a result of that, the Highway Authority has confirmed that it's happy with the visibility displays that are available from those spaces for vehicles backing out onto Seaton Road. There is still some concern, as you've heard from the deputation, about the use of this access, and whether or not it's considered to be safe. These three spaces here have got room to reverse out to leave the site in a forward direction. These two spaces at the far end, possibly a little more restricted, this is the extent of the preserved monkey puzzle tree, and this circle is intended to show the roof protection zone for that tree, such that any vehicle access surfacing through here would have to be done as a result of a no dig arrangement whereby you'd normally use a product called cell web, which is a plastic cell that you fill with gravel on top of the existing surface, so you don't compact or damage the tree. So you'll see there's a condition in the recommendation that deals with that, calling for that detail. So those two parking spaces there, they are close to this boundary here with the front garden of number four. That wall at the moment is fairly low, similar to the one on the front, and you see it on the photographs. It's proposed to raise that wall to be 900 higher than this land here, such that headlights don't shine into the lounge window of number four in particular. But the occupiers of number four are still concerned about people getting out of cars at that point and still being able to see into their downstairs windows. There is an extra permission on this site for five dwellings, which I've shown in the plans for at the end of the presentation, and that involves the whole of this area here being garden, there was no vehicles in there, but it was to be open garden. There was no particular boundary detail shown here on that scheme, so people could have been out in their gardens there in a similar manner to getting in and out of vehicles as proposed on this scheme. This element here is the bit that's retained, it's only a single store, and you see in the photographs, it's got a parapet wall here behind it, so that dwelling is built onto the back of that existing building. The original ridge line of these three was eight and a half metres high. This particular unit has been reduced to eight metres to reduce the impact on this property to some extent. You'll see from this, this dark line is the approximate extent of a new single-storey extension that's been built on the back of the floor, and that fills the width of the site when it comes out to there. It's got a solid tiled roof, with the exception of a small roof light on this side, and you can see that it does project. It actually comes out seven metres to the rear of that property, thus coming a little bit beyond where the end of that property would be. So that extension in itself mitigates the sort of overdominancy impact of that particular dwelling there to some extent. That's a closer view of the arrangements at the front, but I think we've covered most of that. This is the elevation to the street as proposed. You see there's the interesting house number four, and this is the elevation with the new wall detail superimposed in front of it, and you can see the approximate scale of the tree there, and it came through this level. It's now been dropped half a metre at that point. That's the parapet gable of the existing building with these existing windows and openings, and that's the ground floor that you see on the photographs. It's the same view with the front wall and the tree removed. It's proposed to build a timber frame structure in the middle here, which has taken a cue from a large extension on the property across the road, albeit on that might as of the moment. It's proposed to use natural stone and slate on this front elevation. Some of the other elevations are to be painted rhombic, and the materials are still to be submitted for approval, as you'll see from the recommended condition. And that's the rear elevation, facing towards the south, so there is the outline of number four again. This is the eastern side elevation, showing that dropped ridge line, so this would be showing the elevation from the rear of number four Main Road. And then that's the rear elevation of plot four further across. And that's the elevation of the two elements to Seaton Road. Now you can see the garage for that bungalow further down Seaton Road. In terms of the occupier of Lonsdale Farmhouse, which is number six, he was concerned about overlooking from these first floor windows, but when you look at the actual layout of the site, this property here is, I think it's 10 or 12 metres from the boundary of number four, and some distance more to the boundary of number six, so those windows would be considered to be way beyond the normal minimum standard for lots of privacy for number six. Those are the two side elevations of plot four at the back. And that's the first floor plans, the second floor plans, first and second floor plans for plot four, so they're all fairly similar. So going back to the photographs of the site, you can see that single-storey element in there that's to be retained. These are the properties opposite, there's that timber extension I was talking about on the back of the house opposite, and there's the old pheasant which is directly opposite the site. And that's looking in where this wall would be raised up to about that point, kept layer around the corner, and the new access would be in there with those three parking spaces at that point. These buildings would all be demolished. Again, that's looking in at the front where that access would be. That's the second access further back, and the bungalow beyond with its garage. These are the buildings that would be demolished behind that existing parapet wall. This is a marker that was held up by the occupier of number four to show the height of the original building as it was proposed. The two units near the road are still at that height, as I say, the one adjacent to that boundary's now been lowered. Don't be confused with the height of that compared with the height of the building beyond, that's clear, the perspective makes it look a lot higher, which it wouldn't actually be in reality. It's a similar view. And just going back to the front of number four, this is the front door. This ground floor area, I think is a dining room, and the lounge is there, and then this room at the top is a single bedroom that has two windows on the front, and two windows looking out towards the rear. This is part of the area that would be retained, and this is where the two parking spaces would be. So this is the retained element, and you can see three first floor openings retained there, and that's the top of the parapet, so the proposal would involve a short section of wall and then a roof above that element. This is a closer view. This boundary wall between the site and number four is actually skewed off, because the legal boundary goes through sort of parallel with that wall there, and this has been cancelled off a bit for access into the garage site when the two properties were in the same ownership. That's that bedroom window on the side, and that's the view from the bedroom window to that element that would be retained, and the view from that same window down onto that area at the front. And this, again, you can see that wall was cancelled off, and the actual legal boundary that roots through at that point, that's more a private legal matter. That's a view from the front lounge window. This is the back of number four before the new extension was built. This is the extension that was there previously, and there you can see the garage building that had been demolished from the top of that parapet wall at the rear. And this is the new extension that's now built on the back of number four. That's the view from the rear bedroom window of number four, that's a high-low issue in there, it's not the main window, it's the bedroom, so that new building would be built at the side here. Another indication of the height. This is Lonsdale Farmhouse, number six, just showing the site from the rear garden of that property, the conservatory on the rear of that property, and the view from there. Just going back quickly, this is a 2011 application, but it wasn't approved until a year or so ago. This was for five units, and you can see, again, that element was retained, although it was a lower unit than now proposed, adjacent to that boundary, much lower. And then there was a two-storey block with two apartments, ground floor two apartments on the first floor, and that was a typical layout, so that's the retained element in terms of the call on two apartments, but that's as it was approved before. So there's permission for five units on the current proposals for, although they're not houses rather than what is essentially apartments on the previous scheme. So the main issues that are set out in the report is firstly to do with the policy of the site, does constitute previously developed plan, it's within the plan limited to development. Gleyston is a small service centre identified in the core strategy where minor level of development is deemed to be acceptable, and the definition of that is up to five dwellings in principle. There's no conservation area in Gleyston, but nevertheless it's considered that the materials, as indicated, that are still to be approved, will be acceptable. And the property displays traditional elements, such as the steep pitches, the narrowness of the gate, which are typically six and a half metres wide, and is proposed to erect trees on there as well, so from that point of view, it's considered that the scheme is acceptable. And in terms of the residential amenity, there is the reduced height of number four. You can see that the occupiers of number four, on page 84 in your agenda, have commented on that latest plan, and their comments are set out there. You've heard the deputation, they are still concerned, and other neighbours are still concerned about the impact, but if there is any residential amenity impact, it would be on number four, but in this instance it's considered that the design and scale of the scheme is acceptable. And finally, highway safety, well, there's no objection from the Highway Authority now subject to that final advice plan that you've seen, adding that parking spaces are provided, albeit some of them beyond the tree at the front are a bit tight. But the important visibility issues are deemed to be resolved by the Highway Authority, so on that basis, Chairman, it's recommended for approval.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hodget. It is on the addendum report, and also on the final addendum report. That final addendum report, I think, was issued this afternoon. Is there any member who was required more time to read that, if you could indicate if there is? In that case, we will proceed, and as is customary, I'll ask the other member, Mr. Lanning, to speak first.
Thank you very much, Chair. Yes, I've had a number of correspondence from constituents regarding this and concerns raised. The deputation, and also the not containing video, it's a fair reflection of the points already raised to me. Though the only outstanding one which hasn't been mentioned is the concern regarding the school bus, which collects and drops off on Seaton Road. So that is from that point of view. If I can talk just on a couple, three areas of this, where I do have concern. The first is regarding the highways, and I do know that highways haven't submitted an objection to an objection to this proposal, however, I do have deep reservations about how the fronts of the site is designed. I know the junction well, living in Seaton, and I will sometimes come back from Alcon going through the wind world over the A47 to Seaton, however, I don't go the other way, because it is a really quite bad line turning onto the A47, especially on the left-hand side. And I'm not sure the officers could bring up the picture looking back down, but... Well, that one there, if you're on a car, you'll try to... That is not the easiest to see at the best of times, and with a six-foot-high wall with three cars parked on the corner, and then possible number two, I believe, it will make the junction more dangerous. And plus, with the added amount of cars, that would be for the four houses on the site, and what I believe is inadequate provision of parking, so I believe there will be an obstacle of it. So I know the highway is not objecting, but I have concerns on that point. The next area I'd like to raise is the policy which officers do quote regarding the planning of the... The next area I'd like to raise is the policy which officers do quote regarding the planning guidance, primarily SP5 in the report, talking about development is appropriate in scaling and design to its location and the size and character of the settlements. And then also policy SP15, where development must protect the amenities of neighbours and be of a suitable scale form of mass to use appropriate materials and make sure there is the safe provision for access and parking. And I am on my to say this, this development, I think, fulfills of those two points. It is, and as number four said, it is an increase in its scale and the effect on its neighbouring, neighbouring houses. And if officers could just take back to the site plan, that is okay. I believe that it doesn't offer the proper provision for safe access or parking on it at all. If you can just go to that one closer side. That is the, actually, sorry, if you could go back a bit. If you look at the actual parking for the four houses, the parking in the top right hand corner for plots one and two is go straight over the route protection area. And I do not want officers to say with regards to the measures to do it, but it is going to be sort of decimated by the current use of the cars. I fail to see from the drawings how the top, anyone would get a car into the top parking space if there is the second one there. Though I don't see how the turning access is available to be there. It looks impossible to me. And then the parking at the rear of the site for plots two and four causes a number of problems for the actual access to the properties. If the parking for both spaces in plot four, so the point two are used, then there is no access for the rear access to the plots for one and two. So from the design, the two houses, one and two, you can't have access if the two car parking spaces are used. Then likewise, with parking plots two, both of their spaces are used in the second one, you can't access the back of plot three. So for me, it is, as residents have sort of said, it is one house too many for this site. I believe, I am not against the principle of this. I believe it has been developed and development would improve this. However, there has just been trying to fit one too many houses on that. And I think the resulting difficulties with parking, access, it is just too cramped. And I don't believe it will comply with those two planning policies. Also, my third point and a significant worry is the environmental protection. Now, this has obviously been a working site for a garage. There was a petrol pump there. So to see the lack of any detailed, any detailed... I'm just trying to think. Any detailed guidance or plans of how they would deal with that, I was quite surprised, sad even, the fact that this has been in three months. And the, we have only just had tonight the addendum report, which comes from the environmental protection, listing the additional conditions, number seven, which are very rare this, but it doesn't give me reassurance, given the industrial, the industrial use of the site, I would say. There had been a petrol pump there, so I would assume there is also an underground tank. How has that been factored in? How is contamination, it's been brought to us at a very late stage. For me, when it should have been brought, these issues, knowing the site, should have been dealt with at the beginning of the application. So I'm unhappy at the, what were being proposed in amended conditions if members were going to support it. But for me, at the current time, I wouldn't go with officers' recommendation for approval. I would look to review the application.
Mr Tomlinson, would you like to comment on the two things? The access and the parking provisions. We're absolutely clear what the Highway Authority view is. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. We looked at the original application. We had concerns regarding the access and the additional wall and parking in plot four. And with those, back to the planning officers, they went back to the application and they revised that, revised the plans there. Seaton Road is a very quiet road. We had initial reservations about reversing out from between the two walls as they were. They subsequently moved the properties back, moved the wall back and realigned the angle on there to a degree that we were reasonably happy on there. Similarly, the existing access is an access that can be used along to the north of the site. That access can be reinstated if they needed to. We acknowledge that. They widened it, moved it further away from the junction as well and provide better access and visibility there. So in terms of the revised plans, we were happy with those, the original ones that we objected to.
And the parking provision?
The parking provision meets the current standards we've got for the properties that are on there. So we're happy with those.
Thank you. I saw Mr Stewart actually in the report, Mr Oxley.
Chairman, thank you. I have no concerns about the buildings, but a brief mention about visibility onto the A47. As shown on the chart in front of us, if cars are actually parked on, as it says, plots two and three, that is behind the lower wall, and you're trying to exit that in a car, now the words are sat below the height of the cars parked in two and three, you come out of plot one. I still don't think you're going to have any visibility of the A47 from there. And therefore, a car coming along the A47, turning left, you are not going to be aware of it possibly until too late. My concern therefore is the safety of leaving that for vehicles coming along the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I echo the concerns of the ward member, given that I live in Lappingham and I use this stretch of road on a regular basis. I know how dangerous it is to try and access the A47 in Blayston. I myself, at this junction, narrowly avoided colliding with a vehicle, which must have been doing at least 80 miles an hour as it went past. Unfortunately, I was able to put the brakes on before. But, and vehicles do go in excess of speed, well in excess of speed, and they're on a regular basis through the village, especially at night, when they believe that they've been caught. It is after all, the main junction, I'm sorry, the main trunk road, east-west trunk road. And so I am very concerned about increased numbers of vehicles trying to access the A47 at this junction. I also, as I say, I'm concerned about the vehicles backing on to the Seaton Road from the back of plot three. One of the reasons why the Seaton Road is quiet is because people don't use it because of the danger of accessing the A47 from that junction. So to put potentially, there were these eight cars, on to this junction and they will have to use it on a regular basis for school runs, for shopping. And the road is dangerous. I also have concerns about the size of the development. As the ward member has said, it's perhaps one house too far. If there were three houses proposed on this site, it would actually give the opportunity for vehicles parked at the bottom of the site to perhaps turn. So they don't have to back out on to the Seaton Road. They can go out forwards from the Seaton Road and perhaps they can amend the parking situation for plot one up in the top right-hand corner. So I believe it's not a good design for the site. We've got a number of concerned residents, neighbouring residents, who are echoing the concerns of the ward member. And I'm going to be, I'm going to find it difficult to go with the officer's recommendation on this one. Are we to hear a little bit of the officers?
Mr Willby, members of the public.
Thank you, Chair. I've got two points to make, please. Can you just give me some dimensions for these houses here, particularly the bedroom space? And how many bedrooms there are?
It's easy to refer to this plan of one bedroom. The three plots across the front are about two bedrooms at first floor and a third bedroom at second floor. So they're three-bedroom units, the one across the front.
What size of those bedrooms? You may think I'm getting to the nitty-gritty, but I just think it's important.
Twelve square metres typically.
Sorry?
Twelve square metres typically, three by four metres.
Three by four metres. My second point is, I was at one of my parish ward meetings last week. And in one of the areas on a fairly pleasant development, they have some affordable housing where the garage space and the parking space has not been well thought out. And because a lot of the young people who live in those houses have at least two cars, one of them being a large white delivery truck or something like that, I just wonder if this is going to attract the same sort of folk to live in it. What other places are there in the village to park their cars apart from in those sort of spaces? Are we going to see them, sort of, on that grass verge? The increasing problems of visibility issues come up with these processes. Thank you, Chair.
Mr Tomlinson?
Thank you, Chair. Two things really. Firstly, with councillor Stewart, as regards the two parking spaces where the lower wall is, if there are cars parked there, then you will not be able to see what's coming from along the A47. And also with that, I noticed that there was provision for extra screening along the front. Is there a condition on that screening as to type and count of screening? Because that, of course, would impact upon the visibility as well, depending on how far across the screen, hey, you know. Would the applicant perhaps be looking to keep the small wall and then put some screening behind it? Then the second point is, does Blayston have a neighbourhood plan? Although they have one pending. And if not, whilst I appreciate it's non-material, has any consideration been given to the parish plan or village plan?
Mr Hoggitt? There's no neighbourhood plan for Blayston at the moment. The recommendation before you relies wholly on the policies within our own development and the use of the Highway Authority's assistance at the moment.
Members? Mr Cross?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I feel sorry for officers at times because they're provided with guidelines from government, from experts. And in my view, most experts have got no reality to normal life. I have great concerns over the parking here, the number of cars that will actually be used by the people who are lucky enough to live in those houses. We have similar major problems in the new development of Barnetford. And I alluded to it when we were discussing that. And I think some of these guidelines under which we are ruled should be looked into. So I'm afraid, Mr Chairman, at this moment in time, I cannot see myself agreeing with our officers that they should be approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Yes, I have to reiterate the concerns of Mr Lammy. Looking at the drawing, it might be just the way the draw, I'm totally at the loss to see having access to that car parking space. Some, too, I reckon, I think something's going to damage the tree, it's not true. I don't know, I just can't judge at distance. It's such an acute angle there, it doesn't bear thinking about. So I would be very concerned about it. Thank you.
Mr Fines?
Chair, this seems to me important to a quite part. And I think this is building up all sorts of potential issues for neighbours to get into disputes with each other. I think the parking on plot one there in the corner, I completely agree, it's just wrong. Even simple little things like the bin store, which is further down on that. If you've got three cars parked there, people are not going to be able to easily move their bags around. So I think it could build up all sorts of major problems, I think, to the future.
Any other member who hasn't? Mr King, sorry.
Thank you, Chairman. It would be in my nerves to focus around the parking, but I understand why. One of the things that concerns me about the parking is the need to this 800-metre-high wall. And it's said on the drawing that it is to increase the height of what looks like a very small stone wall. Has anybody assessed if that's got the foundation to take an exit and drop? Because clearly, that's going to do more damage to the monkey tree than anything else we're talking about. If the proper foundation is properly provided. I'm surprised, and I understand why the applicant wants 800-metre, perhaps to take the A47, which is way in the ground. But I'm surprised with all the other concerns that they're hanging out on that wall in both formats, 900 and 1800. And I personally would vote against it because I think there's a better solution to that wall than to the parking arrangements. I think with a lower wall, maybe even though I own an existing one, which is now more than about 300 to 500 kilometres long, would be a much safer solution and would do less risk to the monkey puzzle tree in the middle, which has to be retained. I also think if that design is eventually approved, we ought to cease to apply the application. Could also design each other three, what, three parking places in Seaton Road? So then on the side, you can just pull back to that, or the drawing, please, for a moment. I think it would be useful if they redesigned the bottom to make sure that access to plot one and two is visible if we can't see place. And if the bin store is sorted, I still feel could also redesign it. But says reversing it only to those three places, for me, would take away some of the safety issues for members of quite a wide base. So I think it stands as well, and to Chairman, I couldn't support it.
Thank you very much. Any other member who hasn't spoken? I'm getting a bit of a little upset.
Members, I've heard a number of comments from you this evening. And you obviously have heard the officer presentation and the comments from the highway officer. I must just caution you, I've heard a number of objections, not only focused on the highway. But if you are intending to use highway objections as a reason for refusal, then I must caution you that the Highway Authority have assessed this application and this design and have determined that the highway risks with the alterations in the site, that they're satisfied with the visibility and they're satisfied with this. So I would caution that that's a very difficult position to go into an appeal situation with. So please, just think on that. And my second point about the car parking, again, you have been advised by officers this evening that parking provision does mean policy. Although I do accept that you've made comments about the practicalities around that. So I would just caution you on those two points.
Thank you very much indeed. I would just add to that, I am, sorry, Mr King, yes?
Just quickly, Chairman. I think Highway Authority's on policy that a number of car parking places wasn't in policy. I don't think the King has detailed explanation of why they came or not to really go by wall surrounding the site. The access to those parking places is acceptable. We've been told they're only acceptable, but we haven't given any detailed reasons. That's what they're done to assess it. Many members who use up very regularly, perhaps have got an alternative view.
Have you a comment?
No, that's the point I was making. It's perfectly acceptable that members have a view on the impact of the wall. And councillor King has expressed that eloquently this evening. So I don't have anything further. and councillor King has expressed that eloquently this evening, so I don't have anything further to add on that.
Thank you. Could I be, sorry, Mr Cross, yes, I'd like to hear.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Oh, you weren't going to look at me. I tried to look at you. I'm sorry to lay this point, but again, we are provided with advice on guidelines. We sit here as practical people, and we probably believe there is going to be an element of safety in practical terms. May I just ask as to how many cars the experts expect to be parked per household? Thank you.
Before I ask for that information, Mr Cross, again, I think there are only two members of this committee, and myself, who will remember the Caldeco application. Common sense and local knowledge, and I would say somebody who uses that section, I entirely agree with all the comments that have been made about the danger and in common sense terms. However, in Caldeco, we said exactly the same thing. We lost that on appeal, and I think it was the first time for many years that we lost it on costs as well. So I would again reiterate what the legal officer said. I'm too reminded at the moment to vote against this, but when it comes to reasons for it, I think we need to be very careful, because if we go against our officers in that one respect, of access, I'm not voting that part on that wall, I think there are other reasons to refuse. But if we put that as our main reason on our statements, I think we stand a very real chance of losing on appeal. We also put the officers in an absolutely invidious position if we take that as our main thing. They, given their professional assessment and my take, Mr Cross's point about the guidelines not reflecting local knowledge, but they then have to defend that as an appeal. I think there are other perfectly good reasons for it, Mr King has alluded to what the legal officer is saying. If you take the access thing, however much it seems to go against common sense. Mr King?
Chair, I take into account the point you made, and wasn't actually devoted against Caldeco, I was aware we got a turn by the sector. However, I still waiting an answer on the assessment of the lower wall, the increase in height, and what the new foundations are required, and if new foundations aren't required. For that reason and that reason alone, I'm still voting against it. But on the point of the access adjacent to the parking of plot three, I cannot understand that perhaps the officers could explain to us, help with them. Not only the main means of war, which is either in a car, it makes sense to access from that side when your site is blind, not on the A47, it's blind on Seaton Road. And that's a bit I'd like to understand, because as well over there, they move all the facilities back, increase the supply, but at the top there, they're intended to allow 900mm high wall. So whichever officer has done that assessment, I'm likely to understand their logic, different there than there. Why?
Just raise one point, members, because it's important, the decision you make tonight, that you understand that the policies are dealing with our policies, they are not guidelines. If you make decisions and call them guidelines back, and we get into a field situation, that can be used against your suffice of appeal for you. If you return it against policy, and you refuse against policy, that's one thing. If you do it because you feel that they are guidelines, you will run the risk of getting the council in trouble. It is the development plan, it is your policy, you determine that's the policy. We've covered this, a number of points, but I don't need to emphasise it because we could get the council into a difficult situation if we're not careful. On the question of the visibility throughout the road, I'm not sure whether the highways officer or Mr Hodges will pick that up about whether that wall does or does not infringe on the required visibility display from Seaton Road until the A47. I think for which one you will pick that up.
Chairman, another point I might add?
No, I thought it wasn't, Mr King, but may I just deal with that point first? Is it Mr Oxlade-Chalmers or Mr Donington on the, probably Mr Donington on visibility display?
Yeah, we looked at the wall on the 47, which obviously reduced down to the 900mm. Normally, we'd measure visibility at about 1.2 metres, which is roughly your eye line when you're sat in a large vehicle. And obviously, the visibility display on Seaton Road, we looked at reversing out onto there, it's a very quiet road with very minimal traffic, and they've moved the anxiety on top of the wall back to afford better visibility there when you were delivering out of that area.
Thank you.
I would just like to clarify, probably Mr Oxlade-Chalmers, Mr King's point about the foundations and so on.
That particular aspect hasn't been investigated in detail, Chairman, so I'm not aware as to whether or not the wall as it stands could simply be increased in height without being removed and a new foundation being put in. The one thing I would say from experience with regards to tree roots is that in a position like that, where the tree has been planted, I would imagine since the road was there, that the tree roots would tend to spread sideways, because they would be restricted by the road and sort of the infrastructure there, and to some extent, this building that comes to about there at the moment. So the roots will not be equally spread around the trunk of the tree, although there may well be some that'd be going in that direction.
Mr Oxley there, Mr Cardle?
Thank you, Chairman, and just very quickly, each planning application has to be looked at on its own merits, as we know very well. And we have to look at policy when we are making our decisions, the officer's recommendations. I am unhappy with the density of this proposed development in this spot. I'm not unhappy with the design, the houses I think would probably sit well on that site. And it's an ugly site, it needs tidying up. I'm not happy with this proposal because of the density, proposed density for this site adjacent to a main trunk road, that is my only concern. And whilst I take on board the comments of the highways officer, and they are better qualified than I perhaps to say about what is allowed, that's to parking places in certain areas. It's just this particular site, I'm not happy to have so many cars proposed to go in there and be coming out on a regular basis. And that's my self-concern. So, I think if the applicant were to come back at a later date with a different application, which wasn't so densely, the proposal, the housing wasn't so dense proposal, then that would make it different as far as I'm concerned, but I can't support some issues of putting so many cars so close to a very major road.
Mr Cardle?
Thank you, Chair. Going back to the visibility issue again, I would like a highways officer to assure me that this 900mm wall and 1.2 metre aisle, if you're sat in a car, whether highways has taken into consideration when those cars are parked there, because that would be higher than the 900mm wall. That's actually going to be 1.2 or above. And given the fact that they're parking and there are two parking spaces, it's fairly possible that there will always be a vehicle there.
Mr Donington?
No, that is very true. But normally through a parked vehicle, you would see through a parked vehicle, same as if you're pulling out onto the road, a vehicle parked on the side of it. We looked at the fixed structures that they've been going to be there, but potentially vehicles do come down and move, so that was why we had to look at that.
Well, I did, Chair. Can't see through a van.
That's true.
I think we have debated this very poorly. Do I have a proposal, please? Mr Cardle?
I propose, sorry, I propose, Chair, that on this occasion, we decline the application.
Refuse?
Refuse, that's the word, the application, based on wanting...
We'll come to the reasons in a moment.
Thank you, Chair, well, that's what I have proposed.
Thank you. Do I have a second, please? Mr Oxley, sorry, I saw Mr Oxley before Mr Lammy, and those in favour of refusal? Sorry. We do, sorry, I've been corrected, thank you, Mr Cardle, that we do need the reasons, yes.
Taking into account everything that the officers have told us and that legal has advised us on, I believe, if only from the point of view of visibility around those parking spaces, a 900mm wall is a 900mm wall, a transit van is a transit van, and it's a full-time parking space, which may or may not be vacated at times, and I don't think that we should allow it to go through on those safety highway reasons.
I'm bringing the legal officer, because I'm absolutely clear about this thing.
Yeah, thank you, and through you, Chair. I've heard a number of reasons this evening in your debate, and I think if I can just quickly run through what they are, I think councillor King had particular concerns about the wall and the impact that that wall, the structure of the wall itself would have on the tree and the protection of a tree that is subject to tree preservation order. There was also concern about density of the number of dwellings on this site. So they were too, and I also know that councillor, sorry, Mr Bullin, your development control manager, made significant notes about some of the comments made. So if I could just refer you to Mr Bullin to confirm those. Sorry, he's just consulting the highway officer, bear with us.
Mr Lammy, regarding to the policy, the one I did highlight, SD55, I'd like, sort of include, that encompasses access parking.
Mr Pausing, ladies and gentlemen, while the officers get this whirling, absolutely right. You may think this is remarkably tedious detail, I can assure you that if we don't get it right, it'll be your council tax that's hit.
Or our council tax, I should say. Mr King?
Chairman, while officers debate on that point, that gives it a tongue-to-tongue moment. It does show the height of that monkey puzzle tree. Can only suppose what they think the roof dimensions are of that height, they will be seeing it again for a few decades. And therefore, I would ask for pros and cons here, to take on board my comment. We had insufficient detail on how that 1800mm high wall will be built. And until we have that, I would include that as a reason for refusal. At the same time, that would let officers have a discussion. I've heard the transport issue, as members could be up against that.
Mr Lammy, it's just another point, sort of a note with that, is that the content from the other issues is using the silver surface. Now, that, from my understanding, is where you actually add a layer onto the existing ground, so that will actually increase the height of where the council said.
If you can, again, please.
Thank you, through you, Chair, we just need to reiterate the reasons. Mr Bullin took note of many of them during the debate, so we just need to be clear for him. So it's the issue with regard to the wall and insufficient information in terms of the depth of the roots of the tree and the damage the wall may cause to a tree that is subject to a tree preservation order. There's the density of the dwellings on the site. If I could ask councillor Lammy to reiterate his two points for me, and there was also the issue about accessibility to the parking, not the number, but the accessibility to the parking, yeah, the visual accessibility to the parking on the site.
Mr Lammy?
From what I've said, I think that I'm quite happy that reflects the point I was trying to make. I don't think this can be included in the refusal, just not my strong concerns regarding the environmental protection. Oh, I agree, it may not be able to be included in the refusal, but...
I think through you, Chair, that, sorry, that point was a subject of a kind of lengthy condition that was included in your addendum report, so it would not be advisable to refuse that. Obviously, it came later in the day, and I do believe that was the point that you were making. It had been picked up in the condition.
Again, I would just provide members of the reason for it. If the reasons for refusal are good enough, it actually weakens the case to put ancillary reasons there.
How can we draw that out?
So we have a proposal, we have a second, they have taken on board the comments that Mr King and others made. Those in favour of refusal, please. And against, add extensions. So that is duly refused and with one extension. Right, we now move on.